I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. Due to the executive orders issued by Governor Newsom due to the COVID-19 outbreak, tonight's meeting is being conducted via the Zoom platform. The meeting is being audio and video, and the recording may capture sound and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district website. We thank you for joining us and ask your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of physical distancing and other restrictions. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. I am Paula Viescaz, Board President. Joining me tonight is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, Ms. Pam Costa, and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members. Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. I'm just going to do a mic check really quick and make sure people can hear me.
We can, Paula.
Okay, great. It's wonderfully silent, which is rare for Zoom meetings. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comment for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a public comment online using the comment form located on the district website at www.sanjuan.edu/june23. If you wish to submit public comment on more than one agenda item, please submit a separate form for each item on which you are commenting. Comments received by 6:00 PM today have already been shared with all board members. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight have already been shared with all board members, apologies. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time that the agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the Raise Your Hand feature. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 1,500 characters. With that, we are at Item B, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for June 9? I heard, okay, so who, I heard a move by Mr. Hernandez?
I think so.
Okay, moved by Mr. Hernandez, seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We are at Item C1, Staff Report, and we will hear first from Diana Marshall, Director of Equity and Student Achievement. Ms. Marshall, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, President Viescaz, Board Members and Superintendent Kern for allowing me to speak on such an important topic as the one I'm speaking on today. The stress of the pandemic is extremely challenging to ensuring equitable practices across our system, and then the social unrest of the institutional racism just increases the complexity of our work in this area. So from the moment that, so I think on June 3rd, we started working on this, and by June 5th, we were able to put together and plan six listening sessions that occurred from June 5th, and our last one is actually June 29th on Monday to do a report out. Today, I'll go into what those sessions were, what the trends were. Before I start, I would really like to publicly thank a handful of people. First, I'd like to publicly thank Lori Vine, my Program Coordinator of the Equity Department. Without her partnership, this work could not have been done. The Equity Liaisons, which is a group of teachers and administrators, 21 of them, as well as our Social Justice Collaborative, all helped in facilitating our listening sessions over all of these sessions. In addition to that, we have several community partners. Armani Easley from Project Optimism, Michael Casper from Improve Your Tomorrow, Anisia Roland from Epic Education, Angelise Farrell from Ucan, Amber Busby from Mutual Assistance Network, and Carmen Perkins from Project Equity was very powerful in being our critical thought partners as we organized these sessions. So, as I said, we've completed five out of the six sessions that took place over the last two weeks. And so June 5th and June 8th, they were titled "A Time to Heal," and the purpose of those sessions was really to collect and listen to our community, our students, and our staff around how they're feeling about our progress around our equity topics and initiatives, and what could we do to continue to improve on those. I think it's important to note that on that Zoom session on June 5th, we had approximately 140 participants, and then on June 8th, we had 160 participants. During that time, we would have like general sessions, and then the facilitators would help facilitate conversations in breakout sessions so everybody had a chance to have a voice. Those breakout sessions had approximately 10 people in each group, so we really were able to listen from all of our stakeholders. On June 10th and 11th, our focus then switched from the entire community to really taking a hard look with inside ourselves, and the June 10th and 11th was specifically developed to talk with our staff and our employees across our district to look at the listening sessions and how can we really move from listening into action. On June 10th, we had 153 participants, and on June 11th, we had 202 participants. Again, those sessions was a combination of whole group dialogue and sharing out, and then going into breakout sessions with facilitated conversations around specific areas. So by the time we got through June 11th, we had some priorities from all of these different groups. The facilitators then spent the next couple days really analyzing and bringing together those priorities, and on June 16th, we developed, we had our fifth meeting where we brought community and staff and everybody back together to look at the top eight priorities and really try to dive deep into the actions that we could take as we moved forward. At that June 16th meeting, I checked on my Zoom a little bit earlier, and we had 358 people participating in the June 16th meeting. In addition to that, one of the things that we saw as we were reflecting on our process is that we weren't collecting as much student voice as we wanted to, and so a group with Lori Vine really reached out to our student groups, and we had two separate student-only listening sessions, and so between those two listening sessions, approximately 70 students participated in that. And so all of that data from all of those four listening sessions were brought into, and the student listening sessions were brought into the themes on June 16th. The trends, the top trends or the top eight that were discussed was really looking at improving our school climate and culture and really looking for diverse representation, finding ways to hold each other accountable as we move into this anti-racist, anti-bias work, and how can we compassionately have courageous conversation to help us all learn to become better members of our community. We're looking at having required trainings around professional development, specifically around anti-bias education, equity, and cultural responsiveness. Another top theme was around really improving upon student and family voice and choice, and one of the top things that came out of that is having strategic conversations around race and anti-racism practices, and how might we do that with students as well as our families in our community. Continuing to improve our work and go deeper into our work around diverse representation in our curriculum, whether that's through the implementation or the integration of the social justice standards or culturally responsive resources. A core tool to help all of this would be creating site equity teams and having tools and resources to allow sites to help create their progress, to measure their progress around the movement of equity practices. Our continued work around workforce diversity, putting more teachers and employees in front of our students that look like them, and then finally just really taking a look at some of the barriers that are presented in our organization around access and opportunity to either schools' programs or rigorous coursework. Those are the areas that we took a bigger look at. I think some of my personal ahas in this work is that, I think, and other people who participated probably share as well, is that a real need to continue to take bold action and, and not, and I'll have to use quotes, "not the same work as usual," but really to take significant steps to show that, or to really move the dial in the work around equity. I think we have to, we have to continue to work on how do we communicate what we're doing and how are we doing in our metrics along that, and then finally making this a consistent priority and not just when there's a crisis. So that's just an update about where we're at with this process. I'm excited to move into our report out on June 29th, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marshall. Do my colleagues have any questions? Let's go through and die of order as usual. Mr. Hernandez, do you have any questions?
Thank you so much for that report. That's very great to hear. Mike, I just one quick question. Of the 70 students that participated, were those all high school age, or were there some middle school, or?
We actually offered, we went into breakout sessions all the way down to elementary, so we had, we had a few students at both second, third, and fifth grade.
Wow, great.
All the way up to graduating seniors.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Costa?
It was really an honor to be able to attend the sessions, and I, I loved listening to the small breakouts. I wish I could have gone to every small breakout group. It was really good. I wonder if there's anything the Board can do at this point to support the work that has been happening in terms of prioritizing, in terms of resources. Is there anything that we could do to help out? That's one question, then I have a second one.
I think as we learn to continue to hold each other accountable and hold the system accountable, I think that that continued focus and that consistent priority towards this work is something that we're all going to have to make sure is a part of our new DNA, and, you know, I look at, I think it's going to be important that we figure out way, Superintendent Kern said it, that there, this is a lot of work in these themes, and how might we prioritize those, and, and, you know, in critical race theory, they talk that incremental steps is not necessarily a way to move, but yet I think it's important that we do thoroughly do very decisive incremental steps. I think the key is that we just keep making those incremental steps.
Ms. Costa, let me, let me address a little bit more of that as well. I think what we will be doing is even when we get to the fall, is looking at some of these themes and almost through the lens of continuous improvement, bringing these discussions back to the Board, even with specific action steps that will be taking place. We'll probably even be sharing some of that, some of those actions at the first board meeting in August around the training, as we're already getting some agreements with some of our bargaining partners. So, so that will be an ongoing discussion throughout the course of the year.
Thank you so much. As we've talked about so many times, it's what we focus on that we achieve, so I appreciate that so much. The other thing, I don't need a certificate and I don't need anything else, but I look at all of the people who participated in this, and I looked at the participant list each single time. Obviously, your Equity Liaisons were there every single time, as were you as Lori Vine, Armani, and all of the outside partners, but there were also some teachers, administrators, classified employees, and students who came every single time. And I think even if people came once, it showed a commitment to the process. Is there anything we can do, whether it's a certificate, whether it's an email blast from the Board, something that says, "Thank you for your commitment"? Could you perhaps, because it's not appropriate for me to bring it up on the 29th, but if you'd bring it up on the 29th and ask participants, would they like to be recognized for what they did? Because it truly was a time commitment, and the passion and the honesty was amazing. So, thank you for leading the charge, and, you know, I wish there were a way we could thank each person individually, but I know we can't do that. Even an email, I'd be willing to do it.
Okay.
To the Board, so let me know.
Absolutely. I think that's very possible. In fact, now that I know how to also see who participated, I've gone a little deeper in the reports that I can get from Zoom. We're having conversations about how to offer professional growth hours for those who did participate.
Wow. I did not realize that. That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. Thank you very much.
Ms. Creason?
Thanks. I'm so glad that we did this, and just two thoughts, and one to piggyback off of Mr. Hernandez's comment regarding the participant data, and does any more participant data exist? I'm just curious, you know, what schools were folks coming from? Are we talking about parents? Are we talking about a lot of staff? Was any of that collected?
I, I would have to go back and look at, because it was all through a Google form, so I, I'm not calling off the top of my head, but I can report back to the Board what data I did collect. I know whether they were students' parents, I can give you those numbers, because I know that's for sure is part of it, but I don't know if I know their sites.
Yeah, whatever is easy, not to create more work, just curious.
Yeah.
And then the other thought I had is that I'm really excited that we're going to be pushing into this work at the school site level. I was really happy to hear that, and I'm just wondering, as we move through that process and do all that good work, is there going to be a way for students to provide, I don't know if an evaluation is the right word, but feedback from their perspective of how it's going as we move through that?
I think that what, there's two parts that I clearly heard, is that students want to have conversations about race and anti-racist practices. I've heard that time and time again.
Yeah.
Really getting it to the student level is going to be a priority, at least in my head, in finding ways to do that. And then I think the second part is, is that the other theme that I clearly heard was that the theme of constant feedback loops and closing the feedback loops on a consistent basis, that really trying to determine whatever our initiatives are, what is our criteria of success with those? How are we going to measure that? And then regularly reporting back to the community how we are doing with those initiatives?
Thank you.
Did I answer that question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Dr. McKibben?
Again, thank you, Diana, and all of the staff for allowing us to participate. I participated in the one on the 8th and the 10th and learned an enormous amount, but one of the things that, that about my listening and being part of the small groups is that I'm old enough to, I was looking back on this, and my first time that I did something like was working on these kinds of institutional racism issues was 1965. Yes, I am that old. But this one does feel very different than most of the ones that I participated in over time, and I wanted to agree with you in terms of you're talking about this as an ongoing priority. Most of the time when I participate in these kinds of things, this is the time that we take our foot off the gas, and it goes nowhere.
Yep.
And this becoming a priority of ours is very important, and I appreciated, I was going to ask the question about how many students had participated, and then you gave me that figure. One of the things I want to pick up from what Zima said is that it seems to me that we may miss an opportunity if we don't take these eight priorities back to the community in something like a thought exchange or something like that, in terms of getting them to know what people are thinking, because I suspect, one of the things that I was really impressed with was the range of the people that wanted to participate. I was in a small group related to, related to hiring, and I was really impressed with how all, I think it was eight people in the group, and each one of them kind of wanted to stretch the system, if you will.
Yep.
And so forth, and I think we want to continue to do that sort of thing, but if we, but if it, if it is not over the top and too extreme and just will drive you to your next drinking party, the idea of going back to the community with these eight things makes some sense to me.
So we have that as part of our documentation and our planning, is that after our June 29th, then we are going to report out the process to the community. I like your idea of maybe adding a thought exchange so people who haven't been able to attend or who were consistently getting kicked off of Zoom could still give their feedback to the process. So we'll, we'll think of ways that we can continue to include voice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marshall, for the report. I look forward to future report outs, and I think, you know, I've heard a couple of times, and of course, this work is work we have endeavored on before, so when people say, "What's different this time?", it's that action piece. So I look forward to hearing those pieces come back and being part of that, of that action. So thank you very much for leading the charge, and we know that both the actions and the conversations are not over, so thank you very much.
Thank you, President Viescaz.
With that, we will move on to our second staff report. We've got Rick Messer, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Instruction. Mr. Messer, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, President Viescaz, members of the Board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight, I'm here to follow up with you regarding our athletic reopening plan that we talked about at our previous board meeting. Today, Dr. Cassiri from Sat County Health approved our reopening plan, and we now have the red light to start the process of bringing back our summer conditioning programs. It's a Phase 1 program. I believe you were able to see the plan last week, and so as of today, our coaches, our principals, athletic directors are working towards putting together their site-based plans to bring back the athletes. And as you know, it's only 10 students at a time per coach. There has to be social distancing. There's going to be trainings that we put together, and we borrowed from the districts that we've worked together that really just set the parameters, and the goal is that each team at each school will submit a plan to their athletic director, to their principal, and to our district athletic director, Ron Barney, to approve them to start as early as Monday, the 29th. To do that, though, they have to have their practice plans, their entering and exit plans, cleaning plans, all kinds of things that are going to, that they have to follow up with, but they're doing a great job. Since we started this process, there's a lot of excitement around it, and we're hoping to see our kids get back on the fields starting next week. And with that, I have to just put out a thousand thanks to Chris Ralston and Frank Carmada and his staff, because they went out and we purchased 50 touchless thermometers and got them in less than a week, just mass cleaning supplies for the facilities, the weight rooms that are going to be used. I mean, we just, we ramped this thing up pretty quick, and just a lot of compliments to a lot of people for that. So the teams can start practicing. It's a limited, it's really only a conditioning program. It's Phase 1. It's what basically all the districts are doing, not a lot of footballs or volleyballs or tennis balls being used, so it's really a conditioning program. Phase 2, if approved by the county, would allow us to increase the number of students to participate in these practices, but right now, we're still at 10, and that's what Phase 1. And Phase 3 ultimately is bringing back a full-time practice type, so we don't know if we're ever going to get there. But what that leads us to is last week at the State California Interscholastic Federation meeting with the 10 commissioners from around the state, they decided to make, July 20th is going to be the day which they decide if we will have fall sports in California. So it really, our fall sports season now is going to fall on the CIF, and that's, that's helpful for us, because we know although we're working and we can get back out on the fields and start our conditioning, we'll know July 20th which way things are going. And so that gives us just an opportunity to know the next step after that. So July 20th will pretty much take us to the next phase, and we'll know from there. So with that, you know, if you have any questions, President Viescaz will be more than happy to ask or answer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Messer, Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, Mr. Messer, thank you very much for that. My only question and comment is that this has been a very hot topic in our community, as I'm sure you've received all the emails that we have received on this, and I just hope that, I am sure that each principal and athletic director of the schools are aware of our plan and what's going on, but I wonder how are we going to get that word and where we are, where we stand to our community partners at next level? Have we thought about that?
Yes. Working with Mr. Allen in Communications, we're going to start publishing with the approval today, is to start communicating it out to our public on our websites as well as the high school websites. The schools are actually, each of the high schools is communicating with their coaches, their families, letting them know that we have been approved and we're starting the planning process. So it's both from a district communication level to the sites, reaching out individually, getting their teams and their coaches and families aware of the situation, because the parents and families have to be involved in this as well. There's a waiver that's required to allow their child to come back onto an athletic field, and so there's a process of expectation that they will have to see the protocols, agree to the protocols as well.
Thank you. One last question. This may be a tough one to answer right now, but that, of course, is for our high school and other sports, but what about the community groups that use our facilities? How do they come into this plan?
Well, as of today, Sat County also released the Youth Sports Guidelines. So they basically, Sat County Health has basically put together very similar programs that we have at the high school level, so now have their guidelines to start. Well, what that's going to do, and I think it's like a domino effect, we're going to have to work with Frank Carmada and his team on facility usage to determine how we can to work together, because I think a lot of people are going to want to get back on our sites and use our facilities once they see our own athletes on the fields using the facilities. And use our facilities once they see our own athletes on the fields using the facilities.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Rick.
Ms. Costa.
I don't have a question. I was just very impressed with how comprehensive the plan was and appreciate that because I think it ensures our kids' safety. So. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Creason.
Nothing for me either. Just thank you. I know that there's been a lot of communication and a lot of work and really managing safety, not just of the kids, but of our staff. So just appreciative of all the work that's gone into it. And I look forward to the communications going out so I could start pointing families that way.
Thanks.
Dr. McKibben.
My question was actually what what Saul asked and the second thing was. The one thing that that has been missing from a number of the emails that we have received was the protection of our of our staff and the adults and the thing. And and that was covered when it didn't seem to be a priority of the emails that came in. And and that's as much of our responsibility as indeed protecting our student athletes. Thanks so much for for doing all this. And I bet it's been got to have been pretty hard on you because we're reading this stuff.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Messer, for the for the report. I think just also want to kind of echo how comprehensive this plan is and just want to emphasize for the community that this is not. Conditioning and weight training as it once was. I mean, there's a ton of modifications here. I just want to make sure that that's absolutely clear. I mean, it takes a lot of work to reopen in a way that still guarantees. The health and safety of both our staff and our students and certainly, you know, including minimal gatherings here cohorting our students to minimize contact. It's really. Contactless. Conditioning, which we know is again, not not where we would like to get back to more normal, but. I just think it's important to emphasize the amount of. Modifications and really attempts that harm reduction built into this plan is very carefully thought out. I think that's why it got a pretty quick. Approval from Dr. Casiri and the thing and the individuals over at the county. So thank you for the work that went into it. And it's kind of our opening step to trying to get as close to to normal as as possible and make sure that our students. Have the interaction that's really, really important.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other further questions or comments at this time, we are at item C two. Board appointed district committees. We have a report from David Wolf, who is the vice chair of the bond oversight committee. Mr. Wolf, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just go over to my screen here. Madam President, members of the board and Superintendent Kern, thank you for allowing me to present this report this evening. In accordance with Education Code Section fifteen two seventy eight B, the San Juan Unified School District Citizens Oversight Committee. Provides oversight to the district regarding the appropriate and legal use of Prop thirty nine bond dollars. The C O C consists of nine members, including P T A, a senior representative, business and taxpayer representatives. It's intended to inform the public regarding the expenditure of measure J, measure N, and measure P bond dollars. Based on when they were approved, these three bonds represent over a billion dollars of bond principal the district taxpayers will be paying off for decades. It is crucial that C O C members be diligent in providing oversight. The committee meets roughly quarterly to review projects and costs. Annually, the committee reviews independent financial and performance audits of these bond dollars and can ask questions of the auditors. This annual review will cover roughly the twenty nineteen twenty twenty fiscal year with most time being spent on the twenty nineteen summer construction season. And review of the C O C meetings held during the last year. And just to begin with that summer construction season, the major facility projects completed for this school year include the science swings at Miraloma and Bella Vista High Schools. The C T E lab at Del Campo High School, new fields at Miraloma in Sina. And Casa Robles, as well as the Dire Kelly and Barrett School Site renovation and construction projects. The Citizens Oversight Committee had the opportunity to visit many of these sites during or after construction, including Bella Vista, Del Campo, and Dire Kelly. These site visits are important and the C O C hopes that they continue in the future. Regarding bond financing, the district has also continued to employ a modified hybrid pay as you go process to fund many of its school projects. This has allowed the district to save over a hundred and fifty million dollars on interest costs. By limiting bond sales and repaying debt quickly after a year or two, the interest rates are at least fifty percent less than if the bonds were sold and paid off over a typical twenty five to thirty year period. Deputy Superintendent Kent Stevens should be commended for continuing this practice. Regarding C O C meetings, the Citizens Oversight Committee has met twice in the last year on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen and January twenty first, twenty twenty. Beyond routine construction updates, the most substantial agenda item discussed at these two meetings was the annual release of the financial and performance audits covering the twenty eighteen twenty nineteen fiscal year. And let me just talk about those audits. The performance audit, first of all, Gilbert CPAs conducted the performance audit review and found the district in compliance regarding the spending of bond dollars under measures J and P and S. The internal controls of the district are sound and total expenditures match audited financial statements. The district also did well prioritizing bond funds on the projects listed in the voter information guide, continuing to maintain the trust of the voters. The bond funds were spent appropriately on construction and modernization of school buildings and not on staff salaries and administrative costs unrelated to the bond itself. This meets the broad definition of a performance audit described in the G A O's Government Auditing Standards, or otherwise known as the Gagis Yellow Book. However, additional criteria is mentioned in the Yellow Book that would add depth to future performance audits. This includes, quote, assessing the relative ability of alternative approaches to yield better program performance. Or eliminate factors that inhibit program effectiveness and analyzing the relative cost effective effectiveness of a program or activity. Focused on combining cost information or other outputs with number one, information about outputs or the benefits provided. Or two, outcomes or the results achieved, unquote. Employing this criteria forces the district to ask whether projects can be done more cost effectively. For instance, as a board member Hernandez knows, because I've talked with him about this a couple of times, is an all weather field is an all weather track. Track and field more cost effective than a grass field and a clay track? Even if the board and district staff decide not to adopt this criteria into future performance audits, they should seek to regularly report in specific detail. On how they are building in cost efficiencies from one summer construction season to the next. District staff will likely counter this point by saying that it falls to the bond oversight committee itself to raise these points. While that is, of course, a correct statement, many committee members don't have the experience to ask the right questions in order to effectively engage. I believe the district could be more proactive in demonstrating to the public how they take construction costs and procurement seriously because they absolutely do. Many taxpayers would love to hear about how the district is constantly adapting and. Trying to be good stewards. I would argue too that this point takes on even more importance following the failure of the proposition thirteen state general obligation school bond back in March. Again, to reiterate, the district does do a good job in this regard. The operations and maintenance department routinely update specs for a number of commonly used items, including HVAC units. Project Joe and other similar initiatives encourage site adaptation and a reuse of school building plans, saving both time and money. Design build is also employed on many projects, limiting potential costly change orders. With regard to financial audits, the financial audit also done by Gilbert CPAs showed no irregularities. In conclusion, there's various ways to analyze the effectiveness of state and local bonds, but three criteria stand out. The projects funded by the bond need to last the length of it so students continue to benefit while parents pay off the interest. Number two, the. Projects funded at the Jersey to the school. And finally, the projects funded should be prioritized based on age and the amount of district general fund routine maintenance done on each campus. Overall, Mr. Carmada, Mr. Arps and the rest of the facilities teams team have done excellently, managing a billion dollars of bond principal. Voters gave them beginning in twenty twelve with measure N. While it's easy to question the priority of some signature projects, parents clearly desire them or measure P would not have passed with sixty eight percent of the vote. It's important to remember that over its sixty year history, San Juan Unified has only placed four facility bonds before voters. The district has a lot of facility catch up work to do, which they are prioritizing based on the age of the buildings. And student enrollment figures using its facility master plan. The closure and consolidation of Sylvan Middle Middle School are one of many examples that demonstrate that. Secondly, the district is willing to spend bond dollars to adapt to changing times and different student learning patterns. While the C T E facilities at Del Campo and Casa Robles or Project Under School may not benefit a majority of the students. The district recognizes that everyone is not supposed to go to a four year university. Using bond dollars to revolutionize the classroom environment in this way appears to be very unique compared to other school districts. These programs are likely to become even more important because of the current COVID nineteen pandemic. Districts that can adapt quickly to support different learning models will be much better off. And finally, San Juan Unified bond dollars routinely last the length of the bond and are spent prudently on twenty five to thirty year or longer school facility projects. The district does not use bond dollars to buy iPads or other items with high with high lifecycle costs. And they've never used a project labor agreement, which has a history of driving up construction costs. Madam President, board members, thank you for the opportunity to present this report and I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wolf, for that thorough report. And it's my understanding that after six years of service, this will be one of your last board meetings with us as vice chair of our bond oversight committee. I wanted to publicly say thank you very much for your service to our district and to our community. With that. Absolutely. Mr. Hernandez, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Wolf, I just want to publicly thank you for your service as well as commend this committee. And you can see that they take their job very seriously and represent the families of our district as well as our tax. Payers in our community. So thank you very much, Mr. Wolf, and we appreciate all that you've done as well as your committee and we continue. We look forward to continuing to work with you and your committee in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Costa.
I just want to add my thanks as well. Thank you so much for your service and to the whole committee.
Ms. Creason.
Thanks so much. I've just wondered, can we get I would love to see your recommendations and have time to just kind of reflect on them. Can we get your report or at least recommendations in writing?
Yeah, I mean, Board Member Creason, I have obviously no issues making sure you get a copy of this report. I think. The facility staff probably has it and it may even be in your board packet for all I know. But yeah, I'm happy for you guys to have a copy.
Did I President Viasquez, did I miss it? I apologize if I did.
It was emailed out to board members, but we can put that at the top of email inbox again.
Okay, thank you.
The statement was, I don't know about the the recommendation, but either way, we'll make sure you get.
Awesome. Thank you.
Dr. McKibben.
Again, David, I wanted to add to the others. Thank you for your service over the six years. I've sat in a few meetings and your. Questions are always penetrating and to the point and and they will miss you when you're gone. I appreciate your work. David, on the bottom of page two. Your statements actually caused me to have a couple of questions. One of the things. I totally agree with you in terms of looking at and trying to find the various cost efficiencies and and so forth. And in the last line, you talk about taxpayers would love to hear about these sort of things. I would appreciate any kind of wisdom or thoughts that you might have on how we can tell the story. Of how we're using taxpayer funds and how we're being a good steward. And and you talk about taxpayers would love to hear. How do you think the best way for us to communicate that would be?
Yeah, Mr. McKibben, I, you know, it's an excellent question and, you know, I think the answer to that, I mean, one of the things that stuck out to me, I mean, the facilities. The individuals in the facilities department did such a good job bringing people to bond oversight committee meetings, you know, to really show that. You know, this was not just a rubber stamp entity and that the district really was working hard to control costs. And promote the effective use of bond dollars and. One of the examples that stands out is you guys did bring in your head of operations and maintenance and to talk about things like HVAC units. I mean, things that cost a lot of money. And just how, you know, there was. There was things like adapting the HVAC unit to the specific site, you know, there was. I mean, just the different criteria that's involved in that bidding process. I mean, it was very easy to see. That, you know, in the contract bidding process, you know, in the sites and specs that you used for these very expensive units. That you were taking the time to bid through those effectively and correctly, you know, to the benefit of taxpayers. And I think. And I don't know if Keith is, you know, in the meeting here tonight, but, you know, maybe just. Maybe just five, ten minute chats, you know, especially in a COVID nineteen environment, you could do YouTube videos just with some of those people and just. You know, just make it very clear that, hey, this is what we do on, you know, each and every major project. And I would include HVAC certainly as one of those major projects. To ensure that bond dollars are used effectively. So I mean, that's just one example that comes off the top of my head.
One of the other, actually, three lines above that you you talk about don't have the experience to ask the right questions and so forth. That caused a concern to me is is there are you suggesting that we we need to include. In our work with the bond oversight committee, some kinds of training or or things like that for the people who become members of that committee? Or or try to make things more clear? What is it that you're suggesting there?
Yeah, so I just I think, especially when you look, Mr. McKibben, at, you know, what constitutes a performance audit. You know, and criteria there and it is part of part of that is looking at the projects and asking, hey, can we can we spend some of those bond dollars more effectively? And again, San Juan Unified has done a really good job of bringing people in to help educate board members. You know, especially in comparison to other districts. There's there's no doubt about that at all. But I think, you know, it's a steep learning curve, especially when you're only meeting, I think for us, it's not even once a quarter anymore. I think we're down to three times a year. Which is fine. I mean, there's no requirement that a B O C meet every quarter. But, you know, I think if if you're going to have board members be effective. You know, in in providing that sort of oversight watchdog experience, you know, they do need to have an understanding of. You know, this is where the money goes. This is what the district can do in some of these high profile expensive areas to spend money better. And I think the more they see that, the more they'll be able to ask the right questions on some of these projects. And, you know, really serve as that district oversight. But I think also you can empower auditors. To ask those questions also by making it a part of the performance audit. You know, there's a reason why that criteria is in the Gagis Yellow Book. Because performance audits auditors can be empowered to ask that question. And I don't know if that's just a function of money. And, you know, that would cost more for auditors to go into specific, say. Arden Middle School facility project and analyze whether bond dollars could have been spent better there. But auditors do have the ability and authority to be able to do that under a legitimate performance audit. And it shouldn't just be left to the the C O C to do that.
Okay, thank you for letting me pick your brain a little bit before we lose you. And again, thank you very much for your service.
Thanks, Mr. McKibben. You're always, well, I know I'm terming out in August, but you're always welcome. All you guys have me back anytime. I've really enjoyed serving on the board. And thank you for allowing me to present to you guys one time before I go. So I appreciate it.
Thank you and have a good evening, Mr. Wolf. With that, seeing no other questions or comments, we are now at items C three and C four. Employee organization, other district organizations. Mr. Allen, do we have any reports from employee orgs or other district orgs?
I have not received any requests to speak under either of these two items.
Okay. We are at item D visitor comment. Mr. Allen, will you please give instruction to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time? Mr. Allen, will you please give instruction to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time?
If you have joined us via the Zoom platform tonight and you are on a mobile device, you will have a raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And if you are on a desktop device, either a web browser or the Zoom client, at the bottom of your participant's screen, there will be a raise hand button. To find that participant's screen, you may need to click the Participants button at the bottom of your screen to make that show. And if you've dialed into the meeting tonight, you can press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand. And we would invite you to do so if you have an item you would like to speak to tonight that is not on tonight's agenda. This would be the time to offer that comment. If you are offering a comment that is on an item that is on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you wait and hold your comment for that item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Do we have any general visitor comment at this time?
We do have one hand that is raised, and I do have one written comment that was submitted after 6:00 p.m.
Okay, before we take the hand raised and then the other comments as well, I would just like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can and will refer to items to staff who can follow up with you. With that, we will take individuals who use the raise your hand feature on Zoom, and we'll start with Casey Maraca. And I invite you, Casey, to correct my mispronunciation if I did not pronounce it. Please begin when you're ready. I apologize.
No, that's okay. It's never pronounced properly. It's Casey Maraca, but no worries. First off, I want to thank you, the board, for your commitment to leading our district during this pandemic. As a parent of two children in the district, I hope that you'll consider our input, ours being mine and my husband's, thoughtfully as you proceed with the multitude of decisions that you are faced with making at this time. Together as parents, we are one of your teachers in the district and a fire department captain who's been on the front lines of this pandemic from the jump. Both of us, 20-plus years in our roles as teacher and with the fire department. So we deeply understand the pandemic, the risks that are involved, and just how crucial it is that the benefits of any course of action be thoroughly weighed. We have two high schoolers here at home, and they are full of anxiety about the coming school year. They ask a lot of questions about what they can expect come August. In fact, from my younger one, they're coming at me rapid fire. They ask a lot of good questions, but the most important one that I'm getting is, gosh, you know, if we're in a hybrid program, how am I going to get to my teacher on the days where I'm not in school and he or she is, is in the classroom with others? And it's a really good question, and I don't have an answer for him. And we have some serious concerns because his anxiety seems to be growing the more we're unable to respond to that. While the threat of COVID-19 and those, the age bracket, zero to 17, is substantially lower than other groups, the mental health of the same age bracket is becoming alarmingly concerning. In our home, we have one son who has begun to show the ill effects of being away from school and from his peers and from sports. And yet we have another one who really took to the whole distance, learning things so well that he's already begun to try to sell us on, you know, leaving his high school to do an independent study program or maybe look into attending one of our local private schools. This isn't some want for him, but he does make a really good argument and that his peers who attend these, these private schools were able to get up and running with their distance learning right from-
That does make the two-minute mark, so we'd ask you to conclude your remarks if you would, please.
Okay, so I will leave all the details out, but in conclusion, we are just asking that San Juan consider offering families an option to send their kids back to school, complete with sports band, et cetera, or to give families the opportunity to participate in a distance learning program, perhaps led by those San Juan teachers that are in a more susceptible demographic. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Allen, I see no other hands raised at this moment on the Zoom platform. Do we want to turn to the ones we've received via email while we wait perhaps for others to identify themselves on the platform if they wish to speak?
I would be happy to. We have one that has been submitted at this point. It is from Keith Woods. Keith Woods writes, "In my research with the Sat County Public Health Department, as of 6/22/2020, there have been only 2,374 confirmed cases of COVID-19, leading to 39 total hospitalizations, 19 ICU patients, and resulting in 36 deaths. There have been no deaths of individuals under the age of 18. With these figures, why would you not allow students to come to school full-time in a traditional setting? Their education is clearly at risk if you do not allow them back full-time. Distant learning does not work. I also want all activities resumed, sports, band, drama, dances, et cetera. Based on the findings, if 100% of the students got COVID-19, they would not die. My high school students' education and mental health is being severely jeopardized. Bring back traditional school and sports."
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. At this time, we do have another individual who's raised their hand indicating public comment via Zoom platform. Mr. Jeffrey Massey, please begin when you are ready.
Yes, I just wanted to counter that, that comment and say that I think that the district needs to basically take a very cautious position when it comes to COVID-19. While it's obvious that, you know, younger people, you know, would not face the potential deathly illness that, you know, older folks would, there's no question that the school district doesn't want to act as a vector for the community at large when students get infected. And so, you know, I would suggest that masks be mandated for the entire school district, you know, obviously for younger children with exceptions, but for certainly middle school and high school students. And also would suggest that, you know, contact sports like basketball and football not come back this school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Massey. At this point, we have one more individual on the Zoom and certainly invite others to identify themselves if they wish to speak. We'll begin with Lauren Leporini, followed by Tenille Stewart. Lauren, please begin when you're ready.
Yeah, I don't, I might, I'm new to this. I have an incoming kindergartner, and I've already emailed superintendent and received an email response back. But as an incoming family, we've received very little, if any, communication from the district other than the registration date in February. And I'd like to think that we're a fairly large stakeholder in terms of the impact that it has on my, you know, first child's experience with school and her formative year of what to expect and to find it being a safe place. I know her needs are going to be much different than a junior high or high school, and my husband is also a high school teacher. And his transition has been challenging, so I understand it from an educator's perspective. I understand how much it's changing as I work in a hospital setting, and my job has not changed at all other than managing the COVID experience on the floor and on the front lines. But I have some significant concerns about how a kindergartner adjusts and finds school as being a safe place if she doesn't have interaction with a teacher or peers, where sometimes learning happens best on the playground. So I understand the ever-changing things that the district is handing, but I would appreciate if somehow there was an avenue created so that families would be able to have more communication and input as to what to expect and also to be able to provide what our needs might be as well and what our concerns might be for our younger children or potentially kids at different ages coming in throughout transitioning to the district as well.
Thank you very much for your public comment. Next, we will move to Tenille Stewart. Tenille, please begin when you are ready.
Hello, Board. Thank you for listening to my comment. Hopefully you're getting to know my name. I am a parent of three children at an elementary school this year, an incoming kinder as well. And I continue to be very concerned about the proposal and the continued movement forward of our school district to go and lean on hybrid model exclusively in a distance-to-distance learning. Our students need to return to school in full. I have a daughter with an IEP. I have a separate daughter with a 504, and I have an incoming kindergartner. And my two children that were educated via distance learning lost out on so much. The progress that we had done and worked so many years to develop and receive with my daughter with a 504 has been completely unraveled and destroyed everything that those teachers, the educators, the school district has done to improve her education experience and make her successful. My daughter with her IEP, the first six weeks received no services, nothing that was directed at her IEP, and that's unacceptable. After that time, when I complained, she then received services, but they were inadequate and they were completely reliant on me being her educator. We cannot continue to do this, and our children, my child who's supposed to have 120 minutes of in-person work per her IEP, plus another 30 minutes of push-in time, distance learning is not going to be able to do that and fulfill those requirements. And so it's not okay, but we are not needing specifically my daughter's needs, but other students in this district's needs, her, their IEPs, her, their 504s. And then what is my five-year-old supposed to do in kindergarten if she goes two days a week? That's the same that she's been receiving in preschool that I've paid for. So how is this any better? It's not okay that the hybrid model is the only thing really being pushed by our district. If people are concerned about safety, they can do business learning, they can stay home. But the rest of us need our children to go back to school in full this fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stewart. Next up, we have participant identified as SB on Zoom, followed by Missy. SB, you are welcome to begin when you are ready.
Hi, sorry, I didn't have a chance to put in my full name because I was trying to quickly get in, but it is Sabrina Bernardo. I have emailed you all separately my thoughts, but I did want to state them publicly. I also would hope that you guys would give parents the choice of choosing between an in-person full-day school experience versus a hybrid versus a homeschool option. I do support moving to a four-day-a-week in-person, if that is to help the situation, to get these kids back to school. I do support, I was listening to the last board meeting, someone made the comment, you know, some kids, and another guy on here or a woman said, you know, some kids really are striving with the virtual. So I do support that option, and I think that is something we should continue to offer for those kids that works for them. Doesn't work for everybody. My child is struggling. It was a huge struggle. We completely lost. I feel like his most fundamental years of learning the most important things are out the window, and I'm so disappointed. I just really hope you guys give the parents the option. I also would like to point out, I think the hybrid model actually puts our kids at more risk because I know for me, when my child is not at school on that one or two days that he'll be asked to attend actual school, he's going to be at childcare. He's going to be at grandma's house. He's going to be at his cousin's house. And they will also have kids there from other places. We don't just stay in Sacramento. They're going to come back and expose even more kids. So with that, I would say, keep them, give us a choice, four days, whatever you guys can do. But I really think giving a choice and giving parents a waiver to sign, like you guys are going to do for the sports conditioning, makes sense to me, and I just hope you guys really listen to the parents that are out there. We have the kids. We are experiencing this every day. Homeschool is a choice. So I appreciate your guys' time. I know you guys have a tough decision.
Thank you for joining us, Sabrina, for your comments. Next up, we have Missy, followed by Dana Mayner. And again, I apologize for any mispronounced names. Invite you to correct me. We'll start with Missy. When you're ready, please begin.
Good evening, Board. My name is Missy Pierri. Thank you for listening to my concerns as well as other parents out with kids in the district. My two daughters, one just graduated from Casa Roble. I have another student at Casa Roble. She will be a junior. And for high school kids, I fully support full-time in-school class with sports. I think the kids at that age are responsible enough to follow protocols and be responsible, and I fully support that. And I did email you all and did air my concerns and support for that option. And I hope you will consider that for, for high school as well as, I think, other age groups. It might be a little bit more difficult to, to come up with the system, but I think there's a lot of bright rooms, bright minds in the room that can come up with a good plan. So I hope you guys can make a decision quickly so people can start preparing, and I'm working on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Next, we have Dana Mayner. Please begin your two minutes when you are ready.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to add, sorry, hold on one second. I just wanted to add that I also support kids going back to school. I think having a teacher readily available to them in a classroom setting, socializing with other kids is very important. I have two students that will now be in middle school. They go to Will Rogers. And I truly think that my older one, the seventh grader, missed out on a lot of learning. We did, I did police that here at home as I was working remotely. But it's, it's a lot different when you have a teacher in class answering questions, helping you with work. It always seems like it's different coming from a teacher than coming from mom or dad. Also, I, I am a huge supporter of letting them do sports as well, especially with football. I think most football players wear gloves anyway, and they may not be six feet apart, but they're not like close contact with each other. I mean, when they tackle, yes. But most of it, if they wear face shields, I think that would cut down on a lot of, you know, breathing or whatever on other kids. But they also wear a mouthpiece, so it's not like they're, they're sneezing or doing anything else to other kids. So I think active sports is very important, especially for the middle school, high school kids because they're going to be coming into colleges and things like that, and they need that socialism. They need that sports activity. I know, again, for my kids during the social distancing and not sports, unless I kick them outside and tell them to swim or go run or do something, they would rather just play video games. So I don't want to see a generation of video game players. I want to see active sports, you know, inquisitive minds out there learning. So thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you for joining us. Up we have Jen. Jen, please comment your two minutes when you're ready.
Hello, I'm both a mother-
Jen, if you've just, oh, there you go.
Yes, sorry. I am a mother of two boys in the district. I have a ninth, an entering ninth grader going into his first year of high school at Del Campo. He has spent the last two years diligently training for high school basketball. He's struggled immensely with learning online. Oh, jeez. He gets the majority of his mental health support from school, from his friends, from his sports teams, from feeling like part of a community. And I just fear that with restrictions moving forward that he will not feel supported or successful in high school. I have an entering seventh grader at Will Rogers Middle School who had a very successful sixth grade year up until school closure. And I hope that he can continue to have a successful seventh and eighth grade experience. He has not been so much phased by the distance learning because he is lucky enough to be able to learn in that, in that way. But I do hope that, like, if it's a choice, he's offered at least, at the very least, a hybrid experience so he can continue to have- So he can continue to have, like, real-life social friendships and not just this distant online experience where I'm finding that bullying is becoming more and more of an issue because there's a personal detachment issue. I also work for the district.
And Jen, you have hit your two minutes, so we are going to have to ask you to conclude your remarks, please.
That is fine. I will end there. That's my response as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. At this moment, I don't see any other hands raised for public comment at this time.
And we have not received any other written comments at this time.
Okay, so that concludes our public comment. We are at item E, the consent calendar. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments for items that are on the consent calendar?
We have not received any request for public comment via the written submission form. If you do have a comment for an item that is on the consent calendar and you are on the Zoom meeting with us, we would invite you to raise your hand at this time. You can do so again by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen if you're on a mobile device or the bottom of that participant's screen if you are on a desktop device, or by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad if you've dialed into the meeting tonight.
Just going to do a quick check. I don't see anybody who's raised their hand at this moment on regards to the consent calendar. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve items E1 through E22?
So moved.
Is there a second? I need a second.
A second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Creason. It's been moved by Dr. McKibben, seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying hi.
Hi.
That was unanimous. We are at item G, our facilities update for the 2020, 2021 school year. Mr. Kamara, please begin when you are ready, Mr. Kamara and team. I see Mr. Ralston has also joined us. I'll let you all take the lead when you're ready.
Yeah, good evening, President Viascas, members of the Board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. The superintendent is recommending that the Board receive an update on the current facility safety protocols for the 2021 school year. I would like to introduce to you Mr. Chris Ralston. He is our manager of maintenance and operations, and he's going to provide an update through the PowerPoint presentation. And he is available and myself also available to take any questions at the end of Mr. Ralston's presentation. So thank you, and Mr. Ralston.
Thank you, sir. President Viascas, members of the Board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. I am providing today an update on what MNO and Custodial and in teaming up with other departments are doing to bring schools ready for reopen and support any programs that we may be doing. We have three phases that we're kind of guiding our work right now. One already complete, which was the return of MNO and Custodial employees. The other two phases is works in the facilities, and we'll go over those tonight after we recap phase one. Phase one, we made sure that our employees who did not stop working, such as dispatch, which our dispatch center runs 24/7, 365, and did continue through all of this. It was taken care of, making office modifications, changing routines, and limiting the public and contractors who could come up into the office, especially there at the beginning. Other areas of the district, like nutrition services and tech services, we helped with PPE. We already had in stock and any support through our group we could provide, such as daily cleaning for the lunch program, helping with Chromebook rollout and return, and especially at the beginning, providing access and cleanup for the site staff that needed to keep going back in and retrieving items, especially as we're beginning that social distancing learning environment. We established new work protocols with risk and HR and communicated them frequently to employees here at MNO and Custodial. What our plans were, we even included them while they were being developed so they could participate and understand what the work environment would look like before they even arrive back. Also supervisors communicated before employees started again with the shop priorities would be and what the workload would look like, providing some deadlines so that employees always had goals and could keep moving forward. Employees needed to work very independently at the beginning so we could gauge what was safe and what certain things could be done safely or if we needed additional PPE for some of those work tasks. Phase one for MNO, Custodial was a lot of catch-up. We came back in April for Custodians and May for MNO. Summer cleaning program was put into place and then getting our routines back up and running for gardening and irrigation. Moving into phase two now, we started work with some departments that were needing to come back online soon. It includes prioritizing the work and an opening day based on the ability to make the space ready. Central enrollment, Discovery Club, we're up first, and we have them opening, and they are working. We also are working with different district office departments, special education, athletics, to name a few, to either get them open soon or the planning may be a little bit more long-term that we want to be thinking about, especially like special education, working at Ralph Richardson and other programs to make sure that they are fully supported and ready for school return, or when school returns, excuse me. These are some of the items we did at Central Enrollment. The glass guards, the stickers, the new gates that we installed to help with the flow to meet county guidelines. They were all made and installed by MNO employees. Nothing was contracted out. We made the stickers in the paint shop. Glazers built the guards. So we were able to customize and cut the glass and the metal even to make it fit into the spaces appropriately. Phase three is what we're working on really hard right now, planning lots of meetings to collaborate. We have what to anticipate, how to, service departments can support other service departments and then ultimately support the education system. We did break up this phase into public spaces, classrooms, and common areas because they all are a little bit differently and have different needs. Each property, regardless of use, will get several services from MNO in the coming weeks. Some already have been completed. The social distance communication, like posters, and the partitions are being made and hung up now. Team cleaning is into week five, with the majority of our middle schools and high schools being completed by Friday, and we will begin aggressively going through the elementary sites starting on Monday. Also, our HVAC systems and our water systems are getting special service to meet the CDC guidelines. HVAC, we have a lot of need for doing the EPA-listed approved disinfectant and cleaner in our HVAC systems, and we have upgraded our filters to the CDC-recommended filtration rate. We're ensuring all outdoor air vents are working and open to ensure maximum outdoor air mixing and proper room air exchange rates are happening. We're also creating information for cited administrators on ideas to help improve indoor air quality, such as when doors and windows could be opened. But you guys still observe some of the safety guidelines associated with access to the schools. We're still using the team cleaning method because it provides the most consistent cleaning standard across all of the classrooms, which is really important right now. We are using CDC-recommended and EPA-approved products for COVID-19 in addition to our regular work, making sure each space will be disinfected twice this summer. Other benefits of team cleaning is our ability to more closely connect with our employees. When they are at nine sites each week, our supervisors get to talk with and work with each custodian daily. When they are at their individual sites, they're more spread out. We are not able to see them as often and make sure they are supported in the same manner with tools and being on schedule. Also, seeing them every day, it helps with their overall wellness. We want to consider for our employees, being able to talk to them, see them every day. They tell me it's really comforting to have the teams going right now. They've created friendships over the last couple of years, and it really helps them continue to care for each other. We're already embarking on some facility changes that people will notice on any campus, such as glass shields for a single point of contact with the public and posters in all languages appropriate to the campus as recommended by the CDC and risk management. Risk management also has helped identify work routines unique to offices that we can help with at MNO to make sure safer, they are safe from providing wipes to the office machines that are shared and any other barriers that may be appropriate. Floor stickers and office occupancy limit signs are also being developed to help the staff with overcrowding in these type of spaces. Here are example of the glass shield from the office at Carmichael Elementary School. She's going to figure out how to accessorize around it, but there's what most offices are getting. We're also going to update, we have more updated pictures and posters, but at the time the presentation was put together, that's our pretty standard poster. All classrooms will get sanitizer stations that can be topped off nightly. Plus, we should get a teacher's desk size, a 17-ounce pump bottle of hand sanitizer. So it'll be a classroom version and a teacher version. Mr. Kamara and Ms. Chenoweth have put together furniture layout scenarios for various-sized classrooms. And each site will be allotted some safety guards for certain situations that require more individual interaction. We'll also be providing traveling guards of the same nature for student support staff that travel between several sites. All spaces, especially classrooms, will get new custodial run sheets that help meet the new standards that are set by health officials, including both increased frequency of cleaning and disinfecting. We'll be, we'll need to be mindful, we are not littering the campus with so many stickers and signs, but they will be deployed in areas of campuses that may need higher amount of traffic control. We're also creating age-appropriate handwashing stickers for the student restrooms and deploying additional hand sanitizer stations in areas that may have higher demand. Yesterday, I had a Zoom meeting with some principals. We got to talk about various campus things that we should be considering. And one of the comments was made that getting the student governments to participate with the communication will help make it a student message with our groups and not always the adults telling the children. So we look forward to helping support those efforts as well. For PPE, we have procured certain PP already, and we're still making decisions on others. We do have the cloth masks that are being provided to staff, sanitizer stations in the 4,000 gallons of our sanitizer, which is only a third of what we believe will need this year, is in the warehouse or it's on its way. We have ordered and received disposable masks. We have both types, N95 and regular surgical filtration masks. But we'll need to figure out the rate in which they will be used so that we can keep that stat, that product in stock. We're also looking into, I have leads for getting kid-sized disposable masks so that the offices have them for as needed. If a child needs a child-sized mask, the regular adult ones may be a little large. We're also working to get as many wipes in as possible, and both disinfecting and alcohol-based. But it will be challenging. Those are hard to find right now. We're also deploying both of them because some disinfecting wipes could trigger asthma. So we need to be mindful of what product is being used inside of our classrooms. Disinfectant wipes also require Healthy Schools Act training. But both types of wipes that we will have are approved by the CDC for the quick cleaning situations. Some of the items and current topics we are still supporting with SNAI and Nutrition Services to help support any serving method they select, in addition to what athletics could look like and tasks that MNO could support. Our custodial run sheets are in draft form being worked out for the next school year. I know everyone is working together to help provide help to the administrators on some type of guide that will guide them through some at least frequently asked questions or situations. And I know every department's working on that right now. And with that, I can take questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ralston. We will start with Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to commend you, Chris, and your team, and Mr. Kamara, and everyone. It's evident how hard you guys have worked to prepare for this. And it's kind of a little scary as we move forward with the unknown. But at least we're trying to do everything that we possibly can do, and I commend you for that. As we, most of the comments that we've heard tonight and most of the emails and letters we've received have referred to the students. And rightly so, you know, the age bracket of COVID-affected kids is, you know, basically zero. But, I'm sorry, I refer to theirs deaths, I'm sorry. But we do have adult staff. And that was one of my concerns that we continue to look out for them are, you know, because they range from all age brackets. And it looks like we have thought about that and the plan is in place, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
Thank you as well. Great report. What I know for sure is that there are 51 days until we open school. And when I think about the twists and turns that we've encountered in the last 101 days since we closed, I've learned that my need for really detailed planning is great for normal times. But in COVID times, you have to be nimble and flexible and creative and have lots of staff and departments to help steer us safely through this COVID drama. And this report, your staff, and you certainly have planned very carefully. But you've also been able to step in and change very quickly as well. And I think the best example was Friday when Governor Newsom gave the directive for masks. And we had Discovery Club starting on Monday, and the response was instant. The supplies were available, the cleaning had already taken place. But I thought, wow, to have that happen that fast really impressed me. I do have one question, and it may not, this may not be for tonight. So if not, bear with me. Listening to what Mr. Messer said about the cleaning that will take place for sports conditioning, how will that impact use of facilities with the greater need for cleaning?
I would say Mr. Kamara could maybe answer that one better than I.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Costa. We have a meeting tomorrow set up with all the various, with Ron Barney, Dee and Rick Messer, to talk about our options for opening up potentially our facilities to third-party users and what those effects are and how we have to incorporate potentially some changes to our handbook to require potentially more cleaning. There are so many unanswered questions at this point. How do we balance the need for opening a high school athletics and also providing opportunities for our third-party users to also use our facilities safely in conjunction with each other? So it's a balancing act we really need to talk about. We have a couple of different options we're going to be discussing tomorrow, and we'll be presenting some of that information cabinet and then to the Board at some point to figure out what option works best for us to support not only high school sports, cleaning and safety protocols between uses, and to also provide third-party access to youth sports and other third-party users that want to use our facilities under the Guide of the Civic Center Act. So that'll be coming up shortly as we work through what those options can be and how we can incorporate both, again, high school and youth sports using those facilities together. So that'll be forthcoming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Costa. And if my colleagues, Ms. Creason and Dr. McKibben don't mind, I accidentally went out of order. I'm actually going to pause, but I don't forget to call for public comment at this time. I apologize for the oversight, but I will return to my colleagues in just a moment. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
So once again, if you're with us in the Zoom meeting and have a comment that is on this specific item, we would invite you to offer it now. You can do so by raising your hand. To do so, please press the raise hand button found at the bottom of your screen if you're on a mobile device, the bottom of the participant's screen if you are on a desktop device, or pressing star nine on a telephone keypad. And it does look like we have three who would like to offer a comment, President Viascas.
We'll begin with Tenille Stewart. Tenille, welcome back, and please begin your two minutes when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. It was very comprehensive and helpful. One of my questions is, is when will parent groups be allowed to return to the campus and continue to make campus improvements? Such as my school's PPA has a garden project that has been approved by the school district for the installation of garden beds. But it's now been completely put on hold, and we've been told that no, you know, basically eventually you'll be let back in because this is going to provide an outdoor learning space for eventually you'll be let back in because this is going to provide an outdoor learning space for students in the fall. So for my specific example, we would really like to move forward on that. And then my other question is, is has there been any outreach to parent groups that are in existence in our school district to support in these mechanisms? Because I know that as a PTA president, I would love for the school district to work with me and my site on how we can work together on getting supplies, on, you know, funding different things that will be a challenge or in making mechanisms easier for the school district and for the successful return of our children to the school campus. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Debbie Paluca, followed by Tracy Koiore. Apologize. Debbie, please begin when you're ready.
Okay, hello, yes. My name is Debbie Paluca, and I'm a teacher at Early Learning Academy that's on Choice's Charter Campus. I spoke at the last board meeting. And my question is directed towards Chris, if he can answer it, or the board. But we were told originally we were going to open our preschool backup yesterday, but because of not having all the proper PPE in place, I believe we're opening around July 1st. So I just wanted to make sure that Chris is aware that not only discovery clubs are opening, but also our year-round Early Learning Academy preschool. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Debbie. Next, we will go to Tracy. Tracy, please begin when you're, when you're ready. Tracy, you're currently on mute.
So sorry, thank you.
There we go, not a problem.
Thank, first of all, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Tracy Cleaver, and I have a graduated senior from Castle Roble High School and an incoming junior. And I just want to thank you guys, everyone, for all of the hard work that you've done to prepare for our kids to go back to school. And as a parent who strongly advocates for full-time kids back in school due to the mental health and the, the lack of learning that happened during the, the last spring. My question, or my comment is specific to the last comment that was made before you opened up to questions about the meeting tomorrow and talking about use of facilities. And I would strongly encourage you to use your, to, to be working harder towards bringing the kids back full-time versus having third-party and using our resources to clean for third-parties to use our campuses. I think the, the students and protecting the teachers is far more important than using third-parties allowed to use our campuses. We have public areas that they can use. I think that our resources are very, very important, especially with the increase of cleaning and the increase of the, the new PPE requirements and everything. I think our first and foremost needs to be bringing these kids back to school full-time with athletics before we even think about allowing a third-party to use our campuses. And with that, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Finally, we have Mary Beth Barber. Mary Beth, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, am I muted?
Yep, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you. I have been listening for quite some time about everything that's been going on. And I, if you recall, I was in front of this board back in February, basically asking San Juan unify the lineup of the kids and make sure that they wash their hands. So I'm one of those parents that's definitely going to be more on the, we definitely need to be safe and we need to be cautious side. I absolutely hear everything that everybody is saying about kids' mental health. I definitely see it with my own students. But I wanted to just acknowledge the school district for taking all of this very, very seriously. And I think it's going to work best and can work for all if there is a comprehensive understanding on the parts of families of the importance of masks and of having the discussion about cleaning hands and wearing masks every day. So it's not even really a comment for the school districts because I'm seeing that mentality come out. But please definitely utilize parents. I mean, I think I had offered to help line up kids before lunch to get them to clean their hands, especially the little ones. And so definitely do consider talking to parents who are more than willing to help out. There's a lot more activity that needs to happen during the school day to keep everybody safe, from masks to clean hands. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I do not see anybody else wishing to offer public comment at this time. Colleagues, thank you very much for your patience. I got a little bit out of order there, but we will return to the lineup now. We will resume with Ms. Creason.
I don't have too much, anything new to offer that hasn't been said, except for just want to express gratitude. I'm, you know, I'm a parent. I worry about Kaden going back and being safe, even though there's, you know, the mortality rate in kids, is it high? There's still little incubators and we still have a lot of adults around and they still can get sick. So as a parent, it really does bring me great comfort, you know, all these, sorry, my cat's about to throw a promise. It just brings me great comfort to know that the safety precautions are being taken really seriously. And I'm also really excited to hear that we're starting to think about how we're going to communicate that out to the kids themselves, because really we're going to have to make sure that they do the right thing. We can't, there's not an adult for every kid that we have. And I know that there's been some sentiment that the older kids will be better. My Kaden's going into eighth grade and I know he's a hugger. And I know he comes home with writing all over his arm. So although they have, you know, they can understand, will they do? So I appreciate that there's going to be a lot of effort in communicating the new roles to the kids. And thanks for all the work.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Dr. McKibben.
Now I'm unmuted.
There you go.
Okay. The one question, thank you very much, Chris and Frank, for, for this report. I was particularly impressed with that, that you did not have to contract out, that you did all the work in-house. And congratulations to that. I was also particularly impressed with the amount of time that you were talking about the social, emotional wellbeing of, of your staff as they went on and, and so forth. So congratulations to that. I do have one question, concern. In the report, you were mostly talking about face masks as opposed to face coverings. I've tried to, over the last couple of months, read as much as I could and, and also about the kinds of safe coverings that there were. And I've been struck in, in my reading with the amount of time when face masks do not appear to be as all-inclusive as a lot of the literature. And I, and I noticed that you used the word mask as opposed to coverings and have not, did not talk about face shields. I know in, in the areas of special education, for example, that face shields in some places have been used with, with a good deal of success. And, and in my reading, I understand that particularly small children have great difficulty with masks and don't wear them properly. And they, and if they're not worn properly, they're pretty worthless and so forth. So in the grand tradition of San Juan, I was wondering what kinds of provisions have you been thinking about in terms of the choice? In, in terms of face coverings for both our, our students that, that who are masked are not likely to be a real good choice? Frankly, for our teachers, for example, our speech therapists? The idea of face, face mask as opposed to face shields, when indeed seeing a teacher make the sounds and so forth that one needs to make is critically important. What kinds of provisions are you working on in this area? Thanks.
We have, we do have a few. Ms. Bassinelli and her team are guiding us on what a practitioner of various levels and, and, what they're teaching, what they'll need. So we do have face shields. I, I, it is okay to say face coverings. We are implying by mask, I did make the mistake. It is face coverings. We have not only face shields, but we also actually have clear face masks for teachers that don't want to wear the entire face shield. So we will have several tools available to hit as many of the needs of our staff to be as successful in their education process as necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. McKibben. Thank you very much for the thorough report. I have gotten a little bit more involved on this than I ever thought of in my other capacity. Know a lot more than I did six months ago about the EPA-approved endless and materials and supplies to reduce the risk of asthma. And so I'm acutely aware of the many, many different challenges and items that we're balancing here. So just want to acknowledge how much work has gone into this and, and thank you all for it. I do want to lift up a couple of the questions that we heard during public comment. And that's primarily, Mr. Ralston, do you have any clarity on the preschool opening question at this time?
I would probably more refer to Mr. Walters on that one or Amber Lee. I have a schedule. We, we have our pieces in place, but the opening dates I'm not aware of exactly.
Yeah, Ms. Viascos, I was going to say that as well. That's really a response that I would have either Jim or Amber Lee follow-up on.
Okay.
Because they're the ones that are kind of driving that work.
Okay, great. I'll look out for, for a follow-up from them then, if that's okay. Through BC or otherwise. I also just wanted to kind of reflect, I appreciate kind of the peer-to-peer messaging that was acknowledged during, during the report. I think more than anything, I think we all know how much our students impact the culture and expectations on a school site, particularly of their peers. So whatever we can do to kind of strengthen that and encourage it, I was really glad to hear that it's already built in. But certainly want to be a champion of that and just express my, my thanks and gratitude for that. Also just want to note, can Mr. Ralston or perhaps Mr. Kamara, can you speak a little bit to how quickly we can move particularly the HVAC settings around? It was very, the promotion of door air circulation. Certainly one of practices acknowledged by the CDC and top public health experts to acknowledge very soon, we will likely be an actually, you know, even now, but not particularly here, we're responding to multiple events at once. And I'm just wondering how quickly, say, we start to approach fire season, where then it makes more sense to isolate HVAC systems? How quickly can we turn them in and out, basically? My question, and do you have any insight on that?
Most of our mechanical units, especially in the classrooms, are computer-driven. So it could be as simple as making some adjustments in the computer and manually forcing the close of, of the outside air intakes. There are sub-units where we have to dispatch staff, but I would hope that it wouldn't be more than maybe a couple hours to hit all the classroom spaces quite effectively.
That's super helpful to know. And I'm sure in no small part due to all of the recent work around upgrading our facilities. So just also want to acknowledge that kind of the recent years of very, very hard work and diligent replacing of our aged facilities truly is to our benefit right now. And so want to kind of acknowledge the role that that's playing in being able to modify as needed as we potentially start to respond to multiple, multiple events. Hopefully it doesn't get to that, but we have to be prepared. So appreciate that. And then I did see a little bit of a note about kind of water flushing. And one of the things that kept popping up was kind of the concern around buildings that are typically in use on a frequent basis, all of a sudden being dorked quite some time and items like Legionnaires' diseases and other things coming up through the bacteria in the water. I'm just curious, can you speak a little bit more to the provision that was included in one of the slides around water flushing, et cetera?
Sure. When the custodians did come back in April, they're obviously flushing the water lines. And they're kind of after that initial stagnant period. Plus, when the team cleaning goes through, a lot of water is used for cleaning up the sites. Our irrigation is running, so all of our irrigation feeds off our main meter in most of our campuses. So there's a constant flushing. And then the areas like the drinking fountains, they just aren't being pressed. The cle, the cleaning team is going and flushing those. And then on August 3rd, just in case, August 3rd and 4th, the custodians return back to their home sites. And they're going to be given a task list of things to do. And it's turn on every faucet, go to lunch, and then come back and turn off every faucet. And I think that flushing will push enough gallons through the system multiple times to be ready for that first day of school. And those are some of the processes we do anyway, because of summer, where you get, if, in the old-school way, you would, you'd hit the drinking fountain when you came back to campus and some brown water would come out. Now we don't, we can't have that anymore. So we always have that flushing procedure kind of as typical anyway.
Appreciate that. My last question is just, I'm curious if anyone has an update on any PPE made available by the county office of education? It's my understanding that PPE supplies were being pushed to the local LEAs through county offices. And I'm just wondering if that process has completed itself, if it's been successful or not, or if there have been challenges?
Yes, and no, and yes. The original request, back in the middle of us being at home, the county was not very comfortable releasing it. We had to show failure in procuring that information, that stuff. But lately, they reached out to us. I think they still had that same stockpile. We got 40,000 disposable masks from the county through the state program, I think. All the other supplies, I have not been able to secure either through the county or the state. And I don't know, I know there's a lot of conversation that it's being provided. I just haven't been given the instruction on how to get it. I do have the 40,000. I think we took one of the largest shares in the county of all the school districts. I think they told me like Folsom took 10,000 or something like that. I, I went, I went for the gold and took as many as I possibly could. I think that was the number we settled on that they were comfortable with.
Got it. It's my understanding, just based on the conversations that I'm aware of at this, that it should include an appropriate number of PPE for each individual LEA and include face shield. So I mean, it sounds like that's, there's some improvement in that movement of supplies. I mean, hopefully that occurs soon. But if not, I'll plan to follow up with, with one of you because if not, happy to, happy to try to elevate that. That's all that I have. I'm going to turn, I, again, acknowledging I went a little bit of out of order. Invite some of my colleagues, if they have any further questions, to raise them now, otherwise that'll, that'll be the end. Seeing none of my colleagues wishing to come back. Again, thank you very, very much. It's hard to capture everything that's been done on a slide, on a slideshow and on a PowerPoint. But I know it's not easy. So thank you all of, all that's gone into this and all of the work and flexibility that goes into making sure that our facilities are safe for our students, our staff and our community.
Always a pleasure.
With that, we are at item G2, increase in statutory developer fees. Ms. Kamara, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, President Viascos. Good evening, President Viascos, members of the board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. Tonight's facilities item is an action item. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the board hold a public hearing for comment and adopt resolution number 2996, accepting the 2020 Level 1 Developer Fee Justification Study, updating the district's statutory developer fees pursuant to Education Code Section 17620 and declaring the change in fees as exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. Board members, the state recognizes impacts to school- Board members, the state recognizes impacts to schools due to residential and commercial development. The allocation board recognizes the need to increase those statutory fees every two years to keep up with the rate of inflation and construction escalation. The purpose of the developer fee justification study is to document if a reasonable relationship exists between residential, commercial, and industrial development, and the need for new and/or modernized facilities within the San Juan Unified School District. Ed Code Section 17620 allows school districts to assess fees on new residential and commercial construction within their respective boundaries. Because of the high costs associated, excuse me, because of the high costs associated with constructing the school facilities and the district's limited budget, outside resources are required for future school construction based on the formula of the student yield factor. Without the passage of Proposition 13, the state funding sources in the near term are very limited to nonexistent. It's standard to update your fee justification study every two to four years. I choose to bring it to the board every two years, and for the board to consider those, increasing those impact fees as the state allocation board adjusts for inflation. The justification study for levying the fees is required to address three basic links between the need for facilities and new development. These three links are, number one is the burden nexus, which the district must identify the number of students anticipated to be generated by residential or commercial development. In addition, the district shall identify the school facilities and the cost impact of those students. Second would be a cost nexus. The district must demonstrate that the fees collected will not exceed the cost of providing school facilities for the students to be generated from development. And then finally, the benefit nexus. The district must show construction or reconstruction of school facilities to be funded by the collection of those developer fees. The developer fee justification study in your packet tonight, as Exhibit C demonstrates that the San Juan School District requires the full statutory impact fees to accommodate impacts from development activity. There are three different types of developer fees. There's three levels that may be levied for developer fees. The fees are levied on a per-square-foot basis. Level 1 fees, which is what we are recommending, the superintendent is recommending tonight, that amount is determined by statute. Most districts collect Level 1 developer fees. San Juan collects Level 1 fees. Level 1 fees can be assessed if the district conducts the justification study that establishes the connection between development and the need to house additional students. Level 2 fees, just for the board's information, we do not collect Level 2 or Level 3 fees, but just for the board's information, Level 2 fees, that amount is again established by a statutory formula. They can be assessed if the district makes a timely application to the board for new construction funding, which we are not eligible for, and conducts a school facilities needs analysis pursuant to Government Code 65995.5, and satisfies two requirements of the Government Code 695995.6. Again, San Juan is not in a position for new construction eligibility and would not be able to meet the requirements of both of those government code sections. And then finally, Level 3 effectively doubles the Level 2 fees and requires authorizations. These are triggers by the state allocation board when the state is no longer making apportionments for new constructions, when the state bonds are completely exhausted. All the state has exhausted Prop 51 funds, but San Juan does not have any new construction eligibility in order to level, Level 3 fees. The superintendent's recommended tonight, and the state allocation board has increased those impact fees by 29 cents. Our current statutory fee is $3,79 approved by the board two years ago. We're increasing the statutory fee to $4.08, a 29 cent increase on, that's residential projects. On commercial projects, a net increase of 5 cents. Our current statutory fee is 61 cents per square foot, and the increased statutory fee is 66 cents. And rental and self-storage remains the same at 4 cents per square foot. Just to give you a historical perspective, we started bringing, we started bringing fee rates to the board in 2014. At the time, it was $3.36 a square foot. Again, $3.48, $3.79 and 18. And now the recommendation is go to $4.08 per square foot. Just wanted to show a historical comparison on the fee rates that have been levied by the district for development within our boundaries. This gives you a perspective on the income that we have collected throughout the year since 2013 and 14. If you look at the right of this slide, currently, we have collected $1.3 million in impact fees from residential and commercial development. And there's a good mix of both residential and commercial development. Not a lot of commercial and residential development, but enough to impact our school environment and also enough to generate some funds. But there's a mix between both residential and commercial fees. And the permissibility, excuse me. So developer fees can be used for a couple of things. It can be used for the costs that are associated with conducting the study that I just presented to the board. That's in your packet. Any findings or any needs analysis or determination required for adopting the fee, and also to administer the fee for which 3% of those fees can be collected, may be expended for administering the program. And finally, the largest use would be for the construction and reconstruction of San Juan schools. This just gives you an idea of our eligibility on modernization projects that some of our developer fees can be used for. And with that, board members, I can take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kamarda. I declare the topic of statutory developer fees, a public hearing. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
We have not received any public comment via our form. If you are with us on the Zoom call tonight, and you would like to offer a comment on this topic, we'd invite you to raise your hand at this time. Again, you may do so by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen if you're on a mobile device, the bottom of the participants' list if you're on a desktop device, or by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad.
Okay, I see no one raising their hand using the Zoom feature. So with that, there being no further public comments, this public hearing is closed. Do any board members have questions or comments at this time? Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Kamarda. I submit, I sit as liaison on the facility committee, and when it was proposed to them, they voted 100% recommendation that the board adopt the new fees. Frank, could you mention that? I can't, I...
I did not mention that, Board Member Hernandez. I did not mention that the, that the facilities committee did vote, although not...
Well, that's true. We, that's right.
Did not vote as a, excuse me, I'm losing my train of thought here as far as the...
I don't think you had a quorum.
No quorum.
Excuse me. Thank you, Superintendent Kern. We did not have a quorum, but they did a vote just to show the board that they were interested in the board considering the item.
Yeah, that's correct. I just wanted to bring that up. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Ms. Creason?
Mr. Hernandez brought up what I was going to ask, so thank you for that.
Dr. McKibben?
No questions. Thank you. Great study. I really enjoyed looking at the study.
Thank you.
Before we go to the motion, thank you very much to Mr. Kamarda and the team. I do remember this coming forward two years ago only because I find the study absolutely fascinating. In an odd way, the projecting of the average building moving forward, et cetera, all kind of the anticipation numbers around projections in our community and how it might grow and change, I find super fascinating. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for raising the point of our committee having voted. And so with that, I will again just express my appreciation and ask my colleagues, is there a motion to adopt resolution number 2996, accepting the 2020 Level 1 Developer Fee Justification Study, updating the district's statutory developer fees pursuant to Education Code Section 17620, and declaring the change in fees as exempt from the provisions of CECL?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Costa. It's been seconded by?
Hernandez. Yes.
Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please say aye, aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Kamarda.
Thank you, board members.
I'm glad I didn't have to memorize that motion. Appreciate all the assistance from our team. We are now at item G3, Presentation of the CSA Initial Proposal for Successor Contract 2021. Mr. Schumake, please begin when you are ready.
Good evening, President Viasquez, board members, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the California School Employees Association, Chapter 127 Proposal for Contract Reopeners for 2020-2021. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions on this behalf if needed.
Thank you very much. I will turn it to my colleagues. Please indicate now if you have any questions. I see, I see none going once, going twice. Okay. Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments on this item?
We have not received any written visitor comments on this item. However, if you are with us on the Zoom call and you would like to offer a comment on this item, we would invite you to do so now. Again, to do so, we would invite you to raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device, the bottom of the participants list on a desktop device, or by pressing star nine on your mobile phone keypad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. I see none at this time. So, public comment is scheduled next for August 11. We will revisit this item then. We are now at item number four. Nomination for the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. And actually, thank you very much, Mrs. Schumake, for joining us. I apologize for not saying that at the close of the last item. We are now at item G4, nomination for Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. Colleagues, there was a call opened to all board members throughout the county for an education representative to the County Treasury Oversight Committee. The committee meets on a quarterly basis and is charged with reviewing and monitoring the county investment funds and policies. Ms. Barber indicated an interest in serving, and I'm putting her name forward. She has served on a variety of nonprofits and local governance entities, including five years on our very own LCAP committee, two of those as vice chair and chair. At this moment, Mr. Allen, do we have any visitor comments on this item?
We have not received any written visitor comments. And again, if you're with us here in the Zoom meeting, we'd invite you to raise your hand at this time by pressing that raise hand button if you're on a mobile device or on a desktop device, or star nine on your telephone keypad if you've dialed in.
Thank you very much. I see none at this time. Do my colleagues have any questions on this item? Seeing a universal no by way of head nodding to the left and right. I would like to make a motion to submit a nomination for Mary Beth Barber for the School and Community College District Representative to the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee.
I want to second it with a huge thank you. I can have it. My thing still stands.
Joking. Thank you for resolving that. I'll officially give it to Ms. Costa, but Ms. Creason acknowledging that you also desire to do so. So it's been moved by myself, been seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favors, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Barber, for willing to step up and perform that civic service to our community. We are at item H, Board Reports. Are there any board reports at this time? We will go through our diocese order. Mr. Hernandez, do you have a board report at this time?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Ms. Costa?
I represented the district today at the Labor Management Initiative Conference. There were 450 people in attendance, and I served on a panel with Shannon Brown and four other members of the Labor Management Initiative Committee that I was appointed to earlier this year. And our topic was reopening of schools and the district's response to the COVID pandemic. Great questions. Everybody was very involved and interested. So it was a good opportunity to showcase all of the things that San Juan has done for our kids.
Thank you for that report out and for representing us and representing us well in that capacity. Ms. Creason?
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Dr. McKibben?
Yes, I wanted to again say how impressed I was when the meetings that I attended on the 8th and the 10th of June related to our whole look at systematic racism and the kinds of things that we're going to doing. I can't remember in my six years, a level of enthusiasm, a level of care, and frankly, a level of pain and healing that I saw in those meetings. It was very impressive to be part of. And I was, it was, we have much to do, and I feel like we have a great chance of making a great difference in this area. The other thing I wanted to mention was on the 13th, I was, had the opportunity to watch the graduation of the Improve Your Tomorrow student scholars, and was, the stories that they told were heartwarming. And it's just, it is the kind of program that we ought to be involved in. And wanted to thank the two mics and so forth for inviting me to be there.
Thank you very much, Dr. McKibben. I just want to take a moment and acknowledge and thank all of the parents that have emailed and joined us for public comment. This will probably be the hardest fall we've ever had. And I think every time we say this has been the hardest spring or the fall, maybe we should stop saying that because it keeps getting one up. So I just want to, one, kind of publicly acknowledge and say to all of our parents, we hear you. And I hope you see through our reports that there's no easy answer here. There's no solution. I hear the frustration around fundamentally just not knowing. And rest assured that our teams are working tirelessly. If there ever was a summer break, it was minimal to almost nonexistent. We, the number of things we have to balance are, if you spend a lot of time thinking about it, they can become overwhelming really quickly. There's just no 100% right way to go about this. The thing that allows me to eventually fall asleep at night is that I know that our team, our staff, and our board are 100% committed to making sure that we are building the safest environment for our entire community, for our families, for our parents, for our staff, for our students. And that is not measured just in the number of COVID cases or lack thereof. We are taking the whole student and the whole child and the health of our entire community into account. That just makes this harder. But it's work that everybody keeps showing up to and wanting to do and jumping in headfirst. And that's just the public health crisis. You add the layer of our, again, primary public health crisis of systemic racism and inequity. And I just want to say we're not running away from that. We're running towards it. We want to solve both of these issues in tandem. We are not stopping one work because the other one is more important. We're doing both of them together because if we do safely open up our schools, but they are not safe places for our students. Because if we do safely open up our schools, but they are not safe places for our students to be, it doesn't matter. They're not emotionally safe places for our students and our families to be. We've still failed. So thank you all very much. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to my colleagues. And thank you for the parents, to the parents that keep showing up and keep writing us emails. We hear you. With that, we are at item I, future agenda items. Do any board members wish to add any items to the future agenda items? Please note that cats cannot add items to the agenda.
He's on a roll. I'm sorry.
I couldn't help but tease you, Ms. Creason. I apologize. Are there any future agenda items at this time? Seeing none, I think I just want to publicly acknowledge we will be having a July meeting. When is up in, in the air? I don't know, Mr. Kern, if you want to expand on that, but it's happening. There might even, there might be one, there might be more than one, but I'll let you expand if you'd like.
Yeah, pardon me. We're looking at the week of July thirteenth. It'll likely be either the fourteenth to the sixteenth. Based on all the work that staff has to do, it's, it's leaning towards the sixteenth in order for us to just get everything in our cycle. The notifications might not go out as early as they normally do because it is an emergency meeting. But we will make sure we communicate that out as soon as possible. And that will really be the discussion as to what the actions will be taking place in the fall. And there will be a communication going out this week because we have to gather information even before we make final decisions. Because as like, you know, I think Ms. Costa spoke earlier too about the need to have information, but everything changing and, and listening to our stakeholders. So that, that will be going out later this week or possibly next week. But there will be a meeting that week in July.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. With that, we are at item J. Visitor comment. Mr. Allen, can you please remind our participants how to offer visitor comments at this time if they wish to?
I would be happy to. If you have joined us on the Zoom call tonight and would like to offer a comment at this point on something that has not been on tonight's agenda, we would invite you to do so at this time by raising your hand. You can do so on a mobile device by clicking that raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. If you're on a desktop device, that raise hand button is at the bottom of the participants list. Or if you've dialed into tonight's meeting, it is star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand. And we do have one written comment that has been submitted.
Great. Mr. Allen, do you mind reading that? Maybe we can give folks a moment to raise their hand.
I'd be happy to. The comment reads, hello, I'm advocating for us to cut any ties we have with the Sacramento County sheriffs and or police in general. If we have contracts with them, for example, or allow them on our campuses, I'm advocating against those practices. I'm advocating for us to reinvest in our communities, both restoratively and transformatively. I have seen many districts outside of SJUSD ending their contracts or in the process of doing that, so I wanted to bring this up as a concerned community member. Our district is not exempt from sharing a history with police brutality violently impacting black students and our communities at large are being impacted every day. We must cut those ties and invest in restorative and transformative practices for the youth we service, especially for those being directly impacted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. I see no further public comment on our Zoom platform. So with that, seeing no further comments or questions from my colleagues. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.